...conflict with this application. Seeing none, Mr. Kelso.
Yes, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso on behalf of the applicant, Delafield Associates LLC. This application is for the development of a single-family home. Therefore, it does not require site plan approval because single-family homes are exempt. However, there are a series of variances that are required, which of course brings us here tonight to the zoning board. The, just a little background, this property currently has a single-family home on it that is very old and in this important condition, and it sits at the rear of the lot. This proposal is to build a new single-family home, moving the building up to be along the streetscape with the rest of the houses along Delafield Street. As a result, however, we are in need for a series of variances, which I'll go through with you just briefly before I call my witnesses, and I do intend to call three witnesses, my engineer, architect, and planner. First, there is a floor area ratio variance of 0.85 to one versus 0.35 to one, which is permitted. However, I would point out that this is actually a reduction of the existing floor area ratio that's currently with the old house. So it is actually an improved condition. Second, there's a lot size of 2,500 square feet, whereas 5,000 square feet is required. Of course, this is a pre-existing nonconformity exists today. Third, there's a lot width of 25 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. Once again, the lot's an existing lot, so this is a pre-existing nonconformity. There is a building coverage of 37.49%, whereas a maximum of 20% is permitted. That is a new variance. There is a minimal variance from minimum one side yard setback of three feet, whereas 15 feet is required. This is actually a reduction of the variance that already exists there. We're actually making, even though it's still a variance, we're making those setbacks greater. There's variance for a combined side yard setback of six feet, whereas a minimum of 30 feet is required. That's a new variance. There is a rear yard setback of 37.67 feet, whereas a minimum of 40 is required, and that's a significant improvement over what's there today because the rear yard is almost not existent for the existing house because it sits in the back of the property. And finally, there is a parking variance where we are requesting variance for any parking, whereas a minimum of two spaces is required. That actually is the existing condition today since the current single-family house has no parking on the site either. So that's a sum total of the, of the series of the variances, all really driven primarily by the configuration and size of the lot itself. Our feeling, though, is that this is certainly an improvement to be building a, a new single-family home. It, it has four bedrooms. It's limited to an occupancy of six people, so it's not a significant difference from what's there today, which is a three-bedroom and five occupancy. I, I do intend to call three witnesses, as I have indicated, our site engineer to give you just a general overview of the site and identify those variances, our architect to go through the floor plans for you, and again, it's not a site plan approval, but we feel you need to see the whole picture in order to appreciate the variances. And then finally, our planner, who hopefully will be able to justify those variances. Unless there's any questions from me at this time, I will call my first witness, Adnan Khan. Mr. Khan, if you could come over here and sort of orient ourselves to this.
Can you state your name and your last name, please?
Adnan Khan, K-H-A-N.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Khan, you are a licensed professional civil engineer of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the application before the board for these variances to construct this new house?
That is right.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, master's in construction management from NJIT. I have over 30 years of experience, testified in front of hundreds of boards in New Jersey, Superior Court and Federal Court as an expert witness, professional engineer of five states, including New Jersey, certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Well, let's have you as an expert.
Thank you.
All right, then, Mr. Khan, if you could, rather than we ask you specific questions, if you can give us just a brief overview of the site, orienting it with regard to the plans that have been submitted, and this is the set of plans that submitted to the city, is that correct?
That is correct. They are the exact same, and they are due until March 21st, 2022.
If you could, then, please, just run through the overview of the site, and if you could, then identify perhaps more specifically where the variances are that, that are identified.
Sure. Again, the site is 11 Delafield Street, Delafield Street, and it's an R5 district, single and two-family residential. As Mr. Kelso explained or identified, the variances, those are the variances we are seeking. And I'm going to load in my sheet, C dash total. This is the general site plan of the site that we are proposing. It's a little lighter in the bag, but as you can see, there's an existing, existing house which sits almost to the rear area. So what we are doing is like demolishing that existing house, constructing a new four-bedroom house, which will be pushed to the front yard, and it complies with the front yard requirement with the adjacent laws of the area consent. However, however, due to the undersized nature of the lot, we are requesting the lot for its lot area as well as the side yard and combined side yard setbacks because of the width, as required, is not sufficient. We are also requesting some of the other variances like lot coverage and floor area ratio. The architect will go in detail as to the layout of the house, but what we are proposing is like the house will be setback 13 feet from the, from the right of the line. We have a sidewalk along the eastern side of the house, which runs from the front to the back, and in the back, we have a trash enclosure, which is one of the closure six feet around with containers for both the house of trash as well as recyclables. Also to the rear is our HVAC joint pack, which is located to the middle of the house, and as required, it is 13 feet from the property line as required for the apartments. We are proposing entire rear yard and the western side of the property, olive grass, with some shrub trees in the front and a red maple tree in the back. There's an existing tree that is, a tree tree that is already in, is there, and we are planning to keep that tree and preserve that tree and work on it during the construction, so that tree will remain. We are planning to remove and replace the sidewalk and curb in front of the property because, just to prove because the condition there is not really great, and then maybe due to construction, quite good damage, so we are proposing a new sidewalk and concrete curb. Negative, architect's going to go in detail, but like what, there are quite a few comments raised during our TRCC comments process as well as during the feedback you got from the board professionals, and the plan that is in front of you addresses, I would say, all of those comments. All those comments that were listed in the report, they were addressed as part of the submission except for one title comment that is still pending, which we are planning to address.
And I identified in my opening the variances. I just want to state for the record that those variances that I identified are accurate.
They are accurate, yes.
I have no further questions for Mr. Adnan.
Any member of the board, board professionals have any questions for this witness? Same, next question.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. At this time, I have called Pietro Rosato for this one.
Can you please state your name and your last name?
Pietro Rosato, P-I-E-T-R-O-R-S-A-T-O.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Rosato, you are a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the, the proposed single-family home before the board under this application?
Yes.
Could you then give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Yes, I am a licensed architect in New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. I went to NJIT, I have a degree in architecture, five-year degree in architecture at NJIT, and I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey since 2016.
I would also, Mr. Rosato.
Yes, well, let's have you as an expert.
All right, thank you. If you could, then, please, Mr. Rosato, if you could give an overview of the proposed dwelling, obviously, we want you to, you know, give a description of the floor plans, the layout of the site, and if you would, if, to confirm also the variances as they relate to the building itself that I have indicated previously.
Okay. So we're proposing a single-family dwelling, two-story single-family dwelling. We're looking to demolish the existing one-and-a-half story that's there, as Mr. Kelso mentioned before. The basement of the home, partial basement, it will be a partial basement, and it's about 279 square feet, which will include a mechanical and mechanical, you know, just a mechanical room and a laundry area. The first floor and the remaining of the space in the basement will be crawl space. The first floor plan, actually, the, the first floor, it will be an open concept area with a kitchen, dining, and living room, and a full bathroom to the left. The, and a front porch, which is about eight feet by five feet to the front of the house. The second floor will have eight four-bedrooms and a bathroom, and the maximum occupants will be six for the house. And the roof will be just storage, because of the restriction in height, the height of it will be five foot six.
You have a show of elevations?
Yes. So the elevations, the siding will be cement board, blackboard, and the trim will be PVC trim, and the front of the house will have some thin veneer break at the porch and the front, just the front, that the basement might look of the house.
And could you tell us about the utility systems?
The mechanical will be, first of all, the, it will be gas operated, the house will have gas, and the mechanical equipment will be one in the basement. It will be a two-unit split system, one in the basement and another one in the attic. The one in the basement will be sufficient for the basement and the first floor, the one in the attic will be providing cooling for the second floor.
And just for the record, those, those variances that I indicated that relate specifically to the building, such as building coverage, the floor area ratio, are, are accurate as I've indicated?
That's correct.
I have no further questions, Mr. Rosato.
Any member of the board, board professionals have any questions for this witness? Seeing none, next witness.
Thank you. I'd like this time to call Mr. Keenan Hughes for testimony.
Keenan Hughes, H-U-G-A-G-S.
I do.
Mr. Hughes, since the last time you were before the board had a potential change in any way?
No, they have not, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hughes, you are a licensed professional planner of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, you've had an opportunity, I assume, to review the application before the board that deals primarily with the variances that we're requesting?
Yes.
And if you could, please, hopefully, you'll be able to provide testimony with regards to support for those variances?
I can, certainly.
I won't ask you anymore.
All right, so this property is located in the R5A district. The property itself is basically half the size of what's envisioned or required for the R5A, so that existing nonconformity, the extreme undersized nature of the lot is what creates a number of existing nonconformities and some of the proposed nonconforming conditions of this application. However, a number of those are actually going to be mitigated by the new building. For example, impervious coverage is going to be eliminated altogether in terms of its existing variance position. 50% is permitted. It's currently not compliant at 52.62%, and that's going to be reduced to 49.95% as part of this application. But there are still a number of other variances required. They were listed by Mr. Kelso at the outset, and that also includes an FAR variance. So 0.35 is permitted, whereas 0.97 is existing and 0.83 is proposed. But as was pointed out, this is actually going to be reduced by 0.14 or approximately 350 square feet. So I'll start by addressing the D4 variance, and then we'll get into the requested bulk variances. But the standard of review for a D4 variance is under the Randolph Town Center, the Randolph case, and the focus for the board on the positive criteria is really whether any problems associated with this deviation can be accommodated by the property. And I think there's really two key factors that the board should take into consideration here. One is the hardship associated with the significantly undersized lot and the limitations that this physical condition brings any development of this property. And then secondly is the nonconforming and peculiar current conditions of the property and the significant benefits the proposed development would bring. So in terms of the first point, as I mentioned, this lot is roughly half the size of what's anticipated for the zone. FAR, of course, is calculated as the ratio between floor area and the lot size, so the allowable floor area for a residence is directly tied to how big a lot is. In this case, the allowable floor area of the property would be just 875 square feet, which is really minimal for a single-family area, not sufficient really for a family, certainly a family with children, uncondusive to creating a home that has sufficient functional spaces for its occupants. So this D4 FAR variance largely stems from that hardship and practicality of developing a compliant residence on this undersized lot. But as for the second point, as we've shown through our presentation, we're actually going to be addressing a number of existing nonconformities and really addressing an existing home that's an anomaly in the neighborhood. The home is really far set back from the street right of way, which creates a prominent gap in the Delafield Street streetscape. It has a zero-yard rear yard setback, a zero-foot rear yard setback currently with no rear yard space to provide open space and preparation for occupants in a more private setting. And as I noted before, the home has other existing nonconformities like its 0.1-foot setback to the side yard and noncompliant building and lot coverage. So this proposal will bring the home into greater conformity with a number of these requirements and also make it more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So by locating the building more in line with the neighboring residences, you'll create a more unified streetscape. The property will be improved with the new house with an attractive and compatible design with the neighborhood, and by expanding the setbacks and rear yard space to enhance light air and open space, both for the occupants and its neighbors, that will obviously further the, the general offer as well. So with that in mind, it's my opinion that the site can definitely accommodate the proposed FAR. The FAR is actually going to be decreased over what exists today. The new home will continue to comply with the front yard setback and building type requirements while addressing some of those other existing nonconformities on the site currently, and the side yard setbacks will also be enlarged. So what's before the board is actually a smaller but more attractive house, and it's one that's more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and with less pavement and more landscaping than one currently exists. So for all those reasons, I think this, the FAR variance would certainly grant or advance multiple purposes of the MLEL. Purpose A, by promoting the general welfare and bringing the property into better conformity with the ordinance. C, by providing adequate light air and open space by allowing a home with the suitable size for occupants, expanding the setbacks and creating a newly established rear yard area. Purpose E, by promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities by updating a single-family property in a single-family neighborhood. And also purpose G, by providing sufficient space and appropriate single-family zone for such use. And then in terms of the negative criteria, it's certainly, in my opinion, there's no substantial detrimental impacts to the surrounding area. This is because the home is actually going to be smaller floor area. It's going to eliminate impervious coverage, existing nonconformity, and it will be compliant in terms of height and actually provide more setbacks. So there will be additional visual aesthetic and environmental benefits from this proposal, and no substantial impairment to the zoning or master plan, and that's really because of the extremely undersized nature of this lot. So with that said, in connection with the FAR variance, I'll just briefly address the C variances here, and these all can be justified on both a C1 and a C2 basis. So we've already established the site's very undersized for the zone. If all of the setback requirements are met, the resulting developable area would simply be too small and impracticable to develop a functional home for a family with sufficient space. And similarly, the building coverage is not compliant because of the need to provide a footprint with an appropriate size on this undersized lot. And because of the limited developable area of the lot, it's also impracticable to provide three parking spaces. So really, all three of those bulk variance conditions really stem from practical difficulties associated with the size of the lot. But as I noted before, the proposed development will also bring many benefits by adding more landscaping, creating the previous coverage and compliance, enlarging the setbacks, creating this new rear yard area, and providing a smaller, attractive house that's more in keeping with the area. And then finally, as for parking, this is really simply an existing situation. Any family that's going to be residing here is going to be well aware of existing and proposed parking supply on-site, so it's really not going to change as a matter of this application. So with all that said, I believe all the variances can be granted, satisfied both the positives and the negative criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. I have no further questions. Would we should sit down, any, to Keenan?
Any member of the board or board professionals have any questions for this witness? Seeing none?
That completes our presentation.
Okay. Board discussion, if anyone have any, any member of the board having any? Katie, what conditions will be needed if you're making those recommendations for this application?
Excuse me. Don't you need opening up?
Oh. Thank you. I'm really trying to skip through these. With this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this application, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of this meeting. Now, Katie, Katie. Thanks.
So should the board act favorably on this application, recommend the following conditions of approval? Complies with the terms of the city engineering report dated April 20th, 2020 for the project. Payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer as required. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for the year inspections used in an amount calculated pursuant to Title 1624160 as required. Aument of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 1304 and 1308 as required. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer as required. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction, pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department. Complies with the terms of the city planning report dated May 16, 2022 for the project. Aument of outstanding taxes and water sewer fees, middle six-county planning board approval or waiver. DNR canal commission approval or waiver, freehold soil conservation district approval or waiver. Submission of engineering and/or architectural plans to comply with any changes required, but the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing if any. All utilities and other site improvements be maintained by the applicant after sold spends. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments in the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done on-site unless an encroachment allowing the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the director of public works. Tracking patch will be installed at construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks for the direction of the city engineer. And the applicant has requested variances for D4 FAR. Front yard, excuse me, single side yard setback, combined side yard setback, rear yard setback, building coverage, parking, and their, their existing conditions pertaining to lot area and lot width, and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I may motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Evelyn Escona?
Yes.
Ron Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Tublin?
Yes.
Carla Casaneda?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
And John Bass?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next applicant is Bear Metro Property LLC, 114 Bear Street, Lot 20.01, Lot 31.01, ZB-2021-10. Preliminary and final site plan application, CVC variance to construct a new five-story mixed-use building with a ground floor commercial unit, 22 residential units, and off-street onsite parking space. Some district, C dash Ward Downtown Commercial Office, Tom Kelso, S.R. Once again, I'm going to ask any board member, is there any board member that has any conflict with this application? Seeing none?
Yes, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso on behalf of the applicant, Bear Metro Property LLC. As the chair has indicated, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan, together with various approvals to construct a five-story mixed-use building containing 1,700 square feet of retail space on the ground floor, 15 one-bedroom, four-one-bedroom plus 10 and four-two-bedroom residential units, together with 10 in-the-building parking spaces. The property is located at 114 Bear Street, designated as Lot 20.01, Lot 31.01, and the property is in the C4 Downtown Commercial Office zone, wherein the proposed use is permitted. There are two variances that are being requested this evening. The first is a D variance for building height of 54 feet, whereas a maximum of 40 feet is permitted. And the second variance is parking variance, wherein we are proposing 10 parking spaces in the building, whereas a minimum of 45 is required. However, I would indicate to the board that then should be any materials, that a bunch of parking authority is committed to 35 spaces in the wellness parking garage for purposes of tenancy of this building. And I think all of you be familiar with this location. Wellness deck is approximately two blocks away. So with that as an overview, I would indicate that I will be calling civil engineer, traffic engineer, who will be the same person this evening, and we will have architectural testimony, and then we will have planning testimony. That's an overview, unless there are any questions, I'll call my first witness.
Please call my first witness.
I will call Mr. Arthur Kuyan for testimony, and I assume that's you behind me.
That's me.
Can you please state your name and your last name?
Sure, it's Arthur Kuyan, that's A-R-T-H-U-R. Last name spelled K-U-Y-A-N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Kuyan, you are a licensed professional engineer of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
I am.
And in that capacity, you are familiar with the civil engineering aspects of this proposed five-story building?
Yes, that's correct.
And also, I believe, again, we're going to use you as if for a deep analysis this evening, you have also had an expertise in, in traffic reports and traffic testimony associated with an application?
That's correct, and I was involved in the preparation of this traffic report.
All right. So what I'm going, well, first of all, could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Absolutely. I'm project manager at Stonefield Engineering Design, located at 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a professional and certified municipal engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing. I received my bachelor's in science from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, and I've been involved in the field of land development for over 10 years, specializing in multifamily residential applications, such as the one we had before you this evening.
And you have provided traffic testimony previously?
Yes, I've been accepted as a traffic and civil engineer expert within numerous boards in New Jersey.
Well, except you're the expert.
All right, then, first, Mr. Kuyan, I'm going to ask you if you could give us a civil engineering overview in the site plan associated with the building and the site. engineering overview in the site plan associated with the building and the site, and we'll go through those aspects of the application and then return ourselves to the traffic testimony.
Sure. I'll actually just start by orienting the board and giving everyone a overview of the proposed projects, and I just want to introduce an aerial exhibit prepared by Stonefield Engineering Design, March 8, 2022. On the mark is A1. So as Mr. Kelso indicated, the project site is located at Block 20.01, Lot 31.01, 114 Bayer Street. It's a 7,535 square foot rectangular lot. It's located just south, oh, sorry, it's located on the south side of Bayer Street, between Joyce Kilmer Avenue and Railroad Avenue. It's an existing two-story commercial property with a service parking lot. The site itself runs Bayer Street, which is a municipal roadway with a 50-foot right-of-way. It's one lane of travel from an east to a west direction. Parking is permitted on both sides, although on the south side, it's residential permit; on the north side, it's actually meter parking. Currently, site access is provided to the site with a one-two-way left-in and left-out, 34-foot wide full-movement driveway. The site itself is generally flat, elevation's ranging from 55 to 53. And the site itself, the site location itself lends itself to a multitude of transit, transit options within walking distance of the site. So with that, I will turn the board's attention to a colorized site plan rendering. It's essentially just a colorized version of the site plan that we have previously submitted. On mark, this exhibit A2, prepared May 19, 2022 by Stonefield Engineering Design. As part of the proposed project, I'm going to demolish the existing structure and site improvements. You propose a 50-foot, 54-foot high five-story, 7,207 square foot building consisting of 23 residential units, 1,700 square foot of retail, and 10 structured parking spaces, one of which will be accessible. Security cameras will be installed for the building after some review of the engineer's review letter and his recommendation. The rear of the property will be a impermeable pavement area with a six-foot high fence. Parking on-site, this is, I'm going to mix a little bit of site and traffic here, but parking on-site is going to be accessed by a 20-foot left-in and left-out driveway leading to 10 structured parking spaces, where the drive aisle eventually expands to 22 feet. And for the RSIS municipal standards, the site does generate a parking requirement of 49 spaces. Yeah, I'll get into that once I get to that, I'll try. Yeah, sorry. So in addition to the 10 spaces on-site, 35 onsite offsite spaces will be contracted through the New Brunswick Parking Authority at the Wellness Parking Deck, which is located about 500 feet from the site, equating to a two-minute walk. The applicant has obtained that letter from the New Brunswick Parking Authority stating its intent and availability of those spaces. And as Mr. Kelso alluded to, we are proposing four electric vehicle charging stations within our site, and with the state senate legislation that has recently passed, this provides the site a credit or a reduction of four spaces, thereby reducing that parking requirement to 45. And with the 10 spaces on-site and the 35 offsite spaces, that brings our parking requirement, our parking supply to meet that requirement. And the parking spaces within the building themselves will be assigned to the residential tenants on a first-converse-er basis. While there, there is some relief being sought for the driveway width, the 24-drive aisle and 22-foot drive aisle parking spaces, we still believe this would be sufficient and safe to utilize, given the low turnover for these vehicle movements of residential parking From an operations standpoint, each floor will have a trash room, and trash will be brought curbside to be picked up by a private hauler, you know, twice a week or as needed on demand. In addition to the ten structured parking spaces within the site itself, there will be loading, will be interior loading spaces with a 12-foot high clearance, this be utilized by move-in, move-out of the retail loadings, or retail loading as well. Ubers and Amazons, you know, Uber Eats, those deliveries will utilize Bayer Street for more of the short-term loading operations. The site itself will place all of the curving and sidewalk along the frontage, as well as proposed two new street trees that comply with the municipal ordinance for street trees. The building will have all-new LED building-mounted and canopy lights intended to provide illumination to both the exterior of the building for the pedestrian safety and the interior for the parking area. All of the lights will be downward-oriented, full-cut-off glare, or full-cut-off pictures intended to prevent any glare to neighboring properties. Public water, sewer, gas, and electric is, are all available within Bayer Street, and the project proposed all-new underground utility connections to those services. And as the site is currently entirely impervious coverage right now, we're essentially mimicking that scenario with our proposed development, but there is an inherent benefit to the stormwater quality, as roof is considered clean water per DEP regulations, therefore by increasing the roof or increasing the water quality within the site, and, you know, as well as conveying the stormwater through piping in lieu of just having a sheet flow over the sidewalk into Bayer Street. And as such, there's, the, the project will comply with all the applicable stormwater regulations and standards, and there is not anticipated to have any adverse impacts to the neighboring properties, downstream watercourses, or conveying systems within the watershed. And we reviewed all of the professionals' review letters and agreed to comply. And with that, I'll take any questions on the civil portion of it.
Any member of the board or professional staff have any questions or comments for this witness?
Just have one. With regards to the 22-foot width in the garage, is there any thought to the last row of parking spaces being like compact only or something like that to allow for easier turning radius or exiting?
You're saying the last row is, oh, I, I, yeah.
The last two spots were compact only or something like that, it might mitigate issues with regards to exiting?
Yeah, we, we just don't envision there being any issues, especially 22-foot wide in a residential use like this. The people are going to be familiar with their spot, it's low turnover, it's not like it gets daily traffic, something along the lines where retail is where people are coming in at the site at frequent times. People are going to be fairly comfortable with the site, they're going to know where their parking space is, and it's, it's really a low amount of spaces. You know, so we, we feel more comfortable having the parking spaces themselves be sufficient with, and then having that drive aisle be a 22. And we've run, you know, various simulations with passenger car movements, and we feel comfortable with this layout.
Right. No further questions?
Okay, Mr. Kuyan, could you just clarify, just for me and for the board? The overhead door is, what's the clearance in that area, and then are, are trash vehicles going to be able to pull into that space to service the trash, and delivery vehicles going to be able to pull into that space, or does that occur from the street?
Yeah, it's, the clearance is 12 feet. It is intended to, you know, taking a Sprinter van, you know, maybe some typical U-Hauls won't be able to pull into that, but most loading vehicles, including trash, will be able to, to pull into the parking garage.
Any other member of the board or professional staff have any questions for this witness?
You did say four EVCS credits?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to type up, just checking.
I think if you're looking at three.
Yes.
It was changed, they added one in their last submission.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, your next witness, please.
If you could, then, put your trapping hat on.
Perfect. It's a little bit of overlap here, kind of just touched on the parking circulation, but as we prepare this trap for order and analysis, we, we looked at, you know, the site's location, and really what we found is the site land has the benefit of being located near an abundance of public transportation, giving these tenants of the site many different options outside of just owning a car and driving to and from the site. And, you know, from this site, within reasonable walking distance, a tenant can access the New Brunswick train station, variety of New Jersey transit bus routes, as well as county and local bus routes. And it gives these residents short and long-distance commuting options instead of just driving. And in analyzing the trip gen, trip generation projections for the site using the industry standard, the IT Trip Generation Manual for the proposed development, we found that this site generates, at its peak, six trips per hour, which is really a minimal amount. And from that, you know, utilizing some IT studies, projects that generate less than 100 trips, daily trips, would not change the level of service on the adjacent roadway system. And as such, the proposed development is not anticipated to significantly impact the operations on the adjacent roadway network. And with that, we have to answer any traffic questions.
Any member of the board or professionals have any questions for this witness on traffic? Seeing none, your next witness?
Thank you. At this time, I have a call, Mr. Anthony Vandermark for testimony.
Sure.
Sure. Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark is spelled V as in Victor, A-N-D-E-R-M-A-R-K. I do. Mr. Vandermark, you are a licensed professional architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the architectural components of the proposed five-story building?
Yes, I am.
If you could, then, give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Absolutely. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut as well. My license is in good standing. I am a principal of the architectural firm of MMK Architecture in Hoboken, New Jersey. I've appeared in front of various boards all across the state of New Jersey, just to name a few. The Newark Zoning and Planning Board, Hoboken Zoning and Planning Board, Jersey Zoning and Planning Board, and dozens others.
Well, except you as an expert.
Thank you very much.
If you could, then, Mr. Vandermark, if you could just give us an overview of the architectural components of the building, touching upon the elevations and use of your exhibits, and I know to the extent that some of it crosses over with some of the testimony will be heard, but to the extent indeed to, you could reaffirm some, some of the things that I will state.
Yes. Again, not to be redundant, we are proposing a five-story, 55-foot-tall, a structure view on Bayer Street. We're proposing 23 units, a general overview of the 23 units. We have 15 one-bedrooms, we have four one-bedrooms plus ten, we have four two-bedrooms as part of this application. We have one 670-square-foot amenity space located at the second floor, and we're proposing a 1,700-square-foot retail space at the first floor. Up on the upper roof, we have a 1,700-square-foot common area roof deck that's accessed only by the elevator and stair bulkhead. As our engineer, Arthur, had previously proposed, at the first floor, we are proposing at 7,207 square feet, 95.6% lot coverage, a first-floor parking garage, but also in the western corner of bumping Bayer Street, a 1,700-square-foot retail space. Retail space has two levels, it has a 900-square-foot upper level, it's accessed directly from the sidewalk on Bayer Street, and has a lower level to be used for storage at 800 square feet. We have a 60-foot property frontage, centrally located is the driveway curb cut. At the driveway curb cut, we are also proposing an eight-foot-wide by 20-foot, 24-foot-long loading and unloading zone, that's for Uber, Amazon deliveries. So we anticipate short-term deliveries utilizing this striped area, where there'll be no parking because already there is a driveway curb cut. Because of limited trip generations with the 10 parking spaces, we don't envision any conflict with these short-term deliveries, because again, they're infrequent and they're very quick. To the right side of my page here, which is the eastern portion of the property, we have the residential lobby, ADA-compliant elevator and secondary stair, also provided mailroom and package room to service the residents above. Of the 10 parking spaces, again, we have four electric vehicle parking, parking spaces attributed to this. We have an ADA-compliant van loading and unloading space here. And again, we have a 12-by-18-foot-wide loading space for retail deliveries, as well as trash pickup and carting, and also moving to move out to the residents above. As part of this application, we are proposing a 2,000-square-foot cellar. Again, a small portion of the cellar is being used for the retail, storage. We have utilities as meters, sprinkler room, and also a light storage room for 10 bicycles. As you come up the building, we are providing a 25-foot setback on the diagonal across the property. To the western side, we have 25 feet 6 inches of rear property line. We have a 25-foot 11 inches setback to the eastern portion. The building is reduced in lot coverage, so we went from 95.6% to 76.8% at 5,790 square feet. So at the second floor, when the building comes back in the rear, again, we're at zero property line in front. We are providing three outdoor terraces. We are proposing five residential units. The break-down residential units on the second floor happen to be three one-bedrooms, and they range from 680, 750, and 785. We're proposing a one-bedroom plus ten, which is here, at 795 square feet, and a larger two-bedroom here in the rear at 1,220 square feet. Each one of these three units, again, have private terraces, that's actually the roof of the garage below. And we're proposing a 10-foot-8 setback to the east that returns back to zero. The pre-existing Middlesex Child Probation Center is directly behind us, that Zero Lot Line. There's pre-existing Zero Lot Line windows that we are honoring, that's why we actually took the building back 10-foot 8 inches to provide light and air for those pre-existing windows. Although they are non-conforming and a fire rating issue, we are not making that issue any worse. We're actually providing a nice buffer in between the diagonal building and those Lot Line windows at 25 feet on the diagonal. As you come up the, as you go up the building, if floors two, three, four, and five, the density increases from five units to six units per floor, because again, we have an amenity located at the second floor. Each floor, again, at five, excuse me, at six units per floor, we have four one-bedrooms, one bedroom plus ten, and two, excuse me, one two-bedroom located per floor. The upper part of the building, as you can see here on the rendering, above the third floor, begins to actually taper back. We have a mansard roof that we're proposing as part of the building exterior, and the units up front get slightly smaller at 710 and 760, as opposed to 750 and 795. The upper roof, again, a 1,700-square-foot common area roof deck, fully accessible ADA-compliant by this elevator that will go up to the roof with two means of egress. We are proposing, as part of the mechanical systems here, each unit will have what is called a mini-split system. So you have a wall-mounted ductless unit in each room, and they have what is called a cartridge condenser that will be located on the roof. So there'll be no condensers at the lower rear yard or even at the primary terraces. All the condenser units are grouped together centrally located and screened from any view on the roof. So again, all mechanical units internal, HVAC condenser is located on the roof and Sheet C4, we are proposing, again, 54-foot-tall five-story building. As you can see here, a portion of the building is located here in the cellar. We have a 14-foot floor-to-floor height on the first floor, again, to accommodate delivery vans, small box trucks of that type, a 12-foot-tall garage door, again, for greater clearances for deliveries, and each of the residential floors are at 10-foot floor-to-floor, giving you 54 feet in total height. In this building section diagram, you can see is that we have a cornice line at the third story. This is consistent with the southern portion of Bayer Street. We have a series of three-story structures with cornices, some have gables, some have flat roofs. But again, the architecture ties into the pre-existing condition on Bayer Street, and as you can see, cornice at third story, and then the building starts to lean back at the mansard roof, so you're looking directly over the top. The bulkheads, and again, any of the HVAC mechanical The bulkheads, and again, any of the HVAC mechanical equipment is centrally located and screened from view. In this section here, you can see our 10 parking spaces are again, five to the eastern side, five to the western side, with a second-floor roof deck above the garage area. Privacy screens that separate each one of these terraces. And we have a landscaped buffer zone that stops you from looking into the windows behind you. When we talk about the architecture, I'll direct you first to the rendering. We are proposing, again, a five-story building. Predominant material on the building exterior on Bayard Street is brick. This is a modular full-size brick, this is not a thin brick, in two tones. It is a slightly lighter red with a little bit of a darker terracotta as an accent, as you can see, it offsets. And also the language on the 60-foot frontage, we wanted to break up the scale horizontally as well. So the one darker brick happens to be in a 20-foot portion, and then we have a 40-foot portion that is in the lighter brick. There was a rhythm on Bayard Street that we were looking to match. So again, what we were looking to do is change the scale horizontally between 20 and 40 feet because it's a smaller scale on Bayard Street on the southern side. But also, we have a three-story cornice line that matches with the pre-existing architecture and a two-story cap. So one of the things that the land use ordinance is looking for is a building base, a building center, and a building cap. Again, we think we achieved this with a highly transparent building base, residential in the middle at floors two and three, and then a building cap with a standing seam aluminum roofing system where the architecture begins to step itself back. The main residential portion has an aluminum and steel entry canopy. The signage being proposed for both the residential entry to the eastern corner and the retail entry to the western corner is just pinned signage. One will have the building number and the other will have the retail signage. Both side elevations will have two different types of fiber cement board siding. In the long elevations, we will have a large format fiber cement board. And then on the recesses, for the interior portion of the units, we have a lap siding fiber cement, again, full fire rating in compliance. And the windows are in compliance with the light and air requirements for each unit. Rear facade, again, fiber cement board. In the lower portion, we have, again, a landscape-heavy buffer zone in between our rooftop terraces and the building behind us, and fiber cement board on the setback portion of the building. Again, stair bulkheads, as indicated, should not actually get higher than 10 feet in height. This concludes my presentation, and I think there are any questions?
I have no further questions.
Any member of the board or professionals have any questions for this witness?
Yes, these plans are dated 5/23/2022, which is actually today.
You know, one other question about that. Is that colored rendering in our packet or no?
This color rendering, what is on the cover of your package. I can note this has a exhibit as well.
What about Z3?
Z3 is in your package as well.
And it's the color?
It's color, yeah.
Any thoughts of greening up the roof at all to make it a nicer amenity and also to enhance the stormwater attenuation?
I'm sorry, can I hear the first portion of the?
Any thoughts of greening up the roof and perhaps terraces to make it a nicer amenity for the residents and also to attenuate some of the stormwater?
Well, the lower portion of the rooftop terraces do have landscaping. The upper portion, we are proposing a white PVC reflective roof to cut down heat island effect. I think this is something that we can discuss with the owner. But again, at this point, we're proposing just a rooftop deck with no extensive roof.
Any other?
Yes, the retailer you're proposing, told me on the right-hand side of the drawing there.
That's right.
You propose it to be a restaurant, or what do you think's going to be in that space?
Yeah, if I could answer that, I think, again, this is C4's district, so if anything's... But I think the intent of the owner is to do something that's probably going to be... Because it's a small space, to service the people in the immediate areas. You know, this is right next to the county administration building, to the cultural center, and to the hospital. So the idea of something like an upscale coffee shop, you know, where people can come in in the morning. There may be some, you know, small items of food that they would do during the day. But it's largely intended to service the immediate area. Typical for what we see around a house.
Oh, just, you know, thinking about the ductwork. If you were to put a, you know, stove or oven in there, where would you ductwork, where would you put the exhaust vents for that?
You typically, in a frontage of this small, you would try to actually create a chase system within the building and go through the roof.
Okay, yeah, all right, very good, thanks.
So with that retailer, is he going to get a parking spot while he, you know, one of those 10?
I guess it's possible. I mean, I would think what would happen is if you were the actual owner-operator and you were there all the time, I think probably that the owner would look to say, that's an appropriate person to have a space. For whatever employees they have, again, it's a walk to the bones. But I think primarily, they would want to use those spaces for the residential tenants. But at the end of the day, that owner is there as much as anybody else is, so.
Any other questions, Collins? Same note, your next witness.
Thank you, thank you. At this time I have a call, Ken Hughes for testimony. Yeah, I guess he's...
Okay, and we will accept him in the next round of witnesses. Thank you.
Again, if I don't need to qualify your work, could you give us an overview of the variances that you requested and hopefully your summation as to how they can be supported?
Sure. So this application requires a D6 height variance and several design exceptions. So similar to an FAR variance, the focus for the board here on the positive criteria is whether there's special reasons in support of the deviation for height and whether the property can accommodate any problems associated with that. And so in evaluating this variance, I think it's really all about the design of this building. And in my opinion, this is a very high-quality design in terms of how Mr. Vandermark really broke up the massing of this building. He talked about sort of vertically to the base, middle, top. There's also a lot going on just in terms of varying the materials and just subtle elements that really break up the overall massing of this building, so it's not imposing from the neighborhood in any way. And it's also going to be a very caging streetscape, especially in that it incorporates the retail on the ground floor, which does cause the building to increase in height just slightly. So the other point I would make is that, first of all, the context here within the C4 zone, just right up the street, you may be aware of other more recently developed projects of a similar or even taller height. 89 Bayard, which is down the street, is actually seven stories. But immediately across the street, 113 Bayard is a very similar property. It's also five stories. So this project is actually going to complement that one nicely, in my opinion. And then also keep in mind that the C4 zone, as you may recall it, has this graduated density concept. And so the height that's permitted on this property is tied to the size of the property. So a 5,000-square-foot lot is permitted 40 feet in height, but a 10,000-square-foot lot is permitted 60 feet in height. This site is just over 7,500 square feet, and we're proposing 54 feet in height. So it's right within that range in terms of what the city's deemed acceptable in terms of time, building height, to the size of the property. So for all those reasons, and in particular the architectural presentation you just heard, it's my opinion that the board can find that there's special reasons in support of granting the height deviation for this particular property. C4 feet being proposed, whereas 40 feet is permitted for a 5,000-square-foot lot. And it would advance several purposes of the municipal land use law. So purpose A, by promoting the general welfare by providing a modern, attractive building that will allow an enhanced streetscape and high quality of life for its residents and provide significant aesthetic improvements to the site and the surrounding area. Providing adequate light and air and open space throughout the building with the provision of higher ceilings, larger windows, and private terraces. Purpose G, by providing sufficient space for a development in an appropriate downtown residential environment in which mixed-use buildings are permitted. And then also purpose I, to promote the desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. In terms of the negative criteria, I think I've already addressed the compatibility of this building within its context. With some of the step acts that are being provided and the use of the materials, the overall design of the building, this is not one that's going to cause any substantial visual detriments to the surrounding area. And as I pointed out, it's in keeping with some of the more recently developed projects in this neighborhood. And then also in terms of the master plan and zoning ordinance, as I pointed out, this building height is actually pretty much in keeping with what the city has determined is appropriate for a property of this size in terms of building height. So my opinion, both the positive and the negative criteria can be satisfied for the D6 height variance. I did just want to touch on the design exceptions that we're requesting. So as you heard from the project engineer, we have exceptions for minimum parking access aisle width and loading. And as he explained, the proposed parking aisle width is adequate. This is a small garage parking area. It's largely going to be utilized by residents who are very familiar with the site. It's just two rows of parking, not any complicated maneuvering within the parking area. So the minimal deficiency of 2 to 4 feet is not likely to cause any detriment but can extend, allow an efficient configuration of the garage that's completely enclosed within the building and you can maximize parking resources on-site. The building foundation and parking area landscaping, this is one. This also came up in connection with the 89 Bayard application. And it's funny because it's a citywide requirement that really doesn't apply itself to a building where you have completely enclosed parking. This is geared towards a surface parking area. So we're respectfully requesting relief in the form of an exception for the building foundation plantings and parking area landscaping requirements. This is not a surface parking area, and the zone contemplates an attached zero-foot setback building to the two sides, so there's simply no room for foundation plantings. So with all that said, Mr. Carlson, unless you have any further, I think that would conclude my testimony. And the parking finally as well, as you heard from Arthur. This is a walkable pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. This building having some limited supply of parking on-site, but then essentially additional supply in the adjacent garage is going to maximize the efficiency of the existing parking resources in the area. We're talking about, for the most part, one or no-car households, I believe, in this building. And certainly, the retail space is going to be pedestrian-oriented and not trigger demand on its own for additional parking. So I believe in this context of downtown New Brunswick, this is a very reasonable proposal in terms of the proposed parking supply and the applicant satisfies the criteria for that exception.
I have no further questions from Mr. Hughes.
Any member of the board or professionals have any questions for this witness?
Thank you. That completes our testimony.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any member of the public have any questions or comments on this matter, please come forward.
What is your name?
William Popko.
Spell your last name first.
P-O-P-K-O.
Do you swear, or affirm to a telephone truth with another military?
I do. Mr. Kayan, you mentioned that the elevation for the site presently is 55 to 53 feet. Do you know where the 53 and the 55 are approximately? Can you gently?
Sure, sure, it slopes from the back of the site to the front of the site.
Slops from the back to the front?
Yes.
Okay. I notice along the, I guess, eastern side... By the way, the white car is, I guess, that's, I guess, east. There seems to be about an area about one foot high in the rear of the lot above the adjacent property. So in terms of building this structure, are you... How would you grade out the site? Is it going to... If you're at 53 to 55-foot elevation currently, you're going to be going up and raising the site uniformly? Or are you looking to remove, to drop the site?
One second. I believe there's a few questions there, something... You just repeat the question about the one foot to the neighboring. Wasn't sure I was too clear on the question was there.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, are you going to be bringing in fill? Are you going to be rearranging fill or removing fill to level off the site?
Yeah, we're going to try to balance it as much as we can with the, really with the building taking up a majority of the property. We don't really have much room to grade or import or export. You know, the building is really going to dictate the sort of movement for the property. We're setting the finished floor at about elevation 53 and a half, which is consistent with the grades along the right-of-way.
Okay, and you talked about, I guess, the removing, well, drainage for the site. I mean, primarily, the water is going to be all up on the roof. And so how do you remove that from the site?
It's going to be collected through a series of drains, eventually piped into a single pipe connection to Bayard Street, underground.
Underground. And you mentioned, I guess, all the utilities will all be underground?
Right.
I looked at the plans like a month or so ago. Well, actually, maybe that's for the question for the architect. When I looked at the plans a month ago, I noticed that there was... It seemed like there was not any kind of rear door to the backyard, the small triangular yard in the back, the rear yard. And I guess you've added a door since?
Yeah, that has since changed, since the refiling, correct. We've added a re-door for maintenance and so forth, yes.
And how many parking spaces will be rented from the parking lot?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. In terms of the roof use, the common area up top, about how many square feet would that be?
1,700 square feet.
For the use of the tenants?
That's correct.
Okay. And are there, will there be... How will that be after, do you know, or that's to be determined?
It's just proposed as a roof deck at this time, that zone.
Okay, and that would sort of be towards the front of the building, I guess, with the HVAC, the condenses you mentioned would be sort of towards the rear?
Centrally located more towards the rear of the roof footprint. But yes, the roof is kind of sliding forward towards Bayard.
And the, I guess, three of the units will have their own deck?
That's correct.
That'll be like the second-floor units?
Second-floor units.
Okay. And the whole... I guess there's 23 residential units in total?
Yes, sir.
And there'll be, there'll be five units per floor on the second, third, fourth, and fifth?
Five units at the second floor, and then six per floor at three, four, and five.
Okay, so that's, that's the 23, so on the grand right.
Yeah, we have an amenity at the second floor that eliminates the 24th.
And I guess, in terms of... Are we, are you able to offer up in terms of any timeframes in terms of commencing construction or that sort of thing?
Assuming we do get an approval this evening, it would probably take between four and six months, between construction drawings and approvals. And then to construct this building, you're looking at an additional 12 months on top of that. So from this evening, it's probably going to be about an 18-month process.
And generally speaking, I guess in the winter, you know, I guess it's hard to do construction. So you're probably looking at, if you don't hit it by the end of the season, the end of this year, then you're looking to wait, you know, a few more months, I guess, over the winter, I assume.
If that was the case, you know, you typically don't want to start foundations in the middle of dead winter. You know, perhaps we could, you know, accelerate the schedule and kind of fast track the foundation systems to get in before the end of winter. Because you can certainly frame in the middle of winter time and if we do get the roof on, we'll be in very good shape starting in the spring.
Mr. Popko, your five minutes of time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who should speak?
Good evening, Charles Cradaville.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Charles Cradaville, K R A T O B I L.
Do you swear our friends and tell the whole truth and not the other truth?
Yes, I, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have some questions. Who owns the property now? I'm sorry?
It's, um, it's, um...
Let me, um...
We'll have Mr. Kelso.
May I ask my time be paused while I wait for an answer?
We'll give you a couple seconds, then.
Agreed.
I don't know what the purpose of the question is.
Well, it's a property, that should be, people should not be stumped by this one.
Well, because they don't particularly think it's that relevant. The applicant itself is Bayard Metro Property LLC?
You could have said the applicant owns it. Okay. Great. Is there going to be a PILOP, P I L O P for this?
Yes.
Payment in lieu of...
My understanding is yes.
Approximately how much would the PILOP be?
Don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Applicant's not going to try for a long-term tax exemption, is that?
No.
No. Okay. Did New Brunswick Parking Authority well this deck? Are the spaces for these tenants going to be assigned or are they just going to have to find the best space they can?
They're unallocated, as they do with all the these spaces.
Okay.
Let me just correct you, Charlie. According to the application, the property is owned by one fourteen Bayard Street Associates LP, but it's the same principles, just a different entity.
Thank you for clarifying. Is there going to be removal of street, on-street spaces to facilitate the entry?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Projected cost for the units rentals, like a one-bedroom, if I want to get one, what am I going to be?
I would tell you, at this point, Charlie, it'd be market. It's all market rate, but I don't think that they, they're at a point to be able to establish that yet.
Okay. It's currently one or two residents, one or two homes on the property now, or?
My recollection is one building and one vacant lot.
Okay. Right. And are there current tenants? What will happen to them?
Well, they certainly better be out of the building before they demolish it. Seriously, Charlie, I'm not, I'm not sure that they're...
Is there any relocation assistance or any, does the...
It's a total private project. I'm sure that whatever, if there are tenants in there, whatever agreement would be, would be between the tenant and the owner.
I understand. I'd encourage the board to consider putting a condition on it. Folks are going to have a, have an alternative housing given to them, not just develop her own, anything else.
I totally object to that. It's not irrelevant to the zoning board or planning board. It's an agreement between whatever tenant is there and the owner. Obviously, if they've got legal rights under a lease, they would either have to consider changing that for consideration, or they'd have to wait till the lease expires.
Okay. May I ask how much time I have left?
Up to you.
Okay. I think the five-minute rule makes it kind of tough to litigate these things, but just asking you to consider a condition that would require proper relocation for the tenants. And after my time's up, Mr. Kelso can talk all he wants about that suggestion. I do want to also put on the record an objection about Mr. Kelso representing frankly anyone before this board. As you know, he's the county government attorney and he should have to choose public service or representing private developers here in this city. More specifically, this project is very near the county headquarters, his office, and he acknowledged that during his remarks. So I think that that poses a conflict of interest. And I do want to just also say before my time's up, I agree with Mr. Burke's suggestion on the green roof and appreciate Mr. Zimmerman, your question on exhaust. I was thinking the same thing. I do, in all seriousness, wish the applicant all the best with the project. I sincerely hope that any tenants that lose their place because of this do get properly relocated and get assistance if they needed to do so. And encourage the developer to find a, you know, good, good tenant to be on the first floor there. I don't know what type of business it will be, but I hope it's something that will be useful to the surrounding community. And yeah, wish you all a good evening. Thank you.
Just briefly in response to Mr. Cradaville, since I don't know the relevance, whether or not me being the county attorney, and he would like me to choose between the two, I think Mr. Cradaville should choose whether or not he's a member of the press or whether he's a political candidate, because you really can't be both the objective.
Any member of the public, any other member of the public who should speak? Same, I'm going to close the public portion. For discussion, any, any members of the board have any questions or comments? Same, much, please.
Should the board act favoritively on this application, we recommend the following conditions of approval. Compliance with the terms of the city engineer report dated May seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer is required. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount stipulated pursuant to Title sixteen, twenty-four, one sixty is required. Amendment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Title thirteen oh four and thirteen oh eight. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer required. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department. Compliance with the terms of the Big Now Consulting Group dated, our report dated May eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Planning review escrow funded for anticipated post-approval reviews. Payment of outstanding taxes and water sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver. Freehold Soil Conservation District approval or waiver. Any other outside agency approval or waiver as required. Submission of engineering and/or architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered if any. Execution of a Title thirty-nine parking enforcement agreement. Compliance with the city's water systems service ordinance, which is chapter fifteen oh four. Cash recycling picked up to be provided by a private hauler at no expense of the city. Payment of any payment in lieu of parking fees. All utility and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their sole expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachments in the public right-of-way show up for city council approval. All construction stages shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing that the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets will be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant should cause streets to be clean if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Tracking patch should be installed on construction exits. Replacement of downed streets, curves and sidewalks for the direction of the city engineer. And the applicant is requesting preliminary and final site plan, a D six height variance, a parking variance and design waivers for backup aisle width, foundation plantings. And I also have parking setbacks to property line and an existing driveway cut less than ten feet from the property line. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Evelyn Escona?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Tublin?
Yes.
Carla Castaneda?
Yes.
Michael Velden?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
And John Cox?
Yes.
Again, thank you very much. Can you take just a couple minutes?
Yeah. We're going to take like a two to five minute... Five thousand seven hundred seventy-five square foot retail building with four units and twenty-three parking spaces. Zoning district I dash two, general and special, Thomas Kelso, that's why.
Yes, members of the board, Thomas F. Kelso, on behalf of the applicant, seven eighty-six Jersey Avenue LLC. Once again, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan together with variance approvals to construct a five thousand seven hundred seventy-five square foot commercial retail building with four commercial retail tenant units, fifteen foot high freestanding sign and twenty-three onsite parking spaces. The property is located at seven eighty and seven eighty-six Jersey Avenue, designated as block five ninety-eight, lots three oh six and two on the tax map. The subject property is in the I two zone, wherein the commercial retail use is not permitted. There are, aside from the use variance, there are a series of additional variants, primarily dealing with the size of the lot. The lot, the first variant is a lot area twenty-six thousand seven hundred fifteen square feet, whereas a minimum of forty thousand is required, which is an existing condition. It's an existing lot. Lot width of one seventy-three point three four feet versus two hundred, once again is an existing condition. And a lot depth of one hundred and fifty-four point one feet, whereas a minimum of two hundred is required, again in existing condition. There's a front setback of thirty point two eight feet, whereas a minimum of fifty is required. A side yard setback of five feet, whereas a minimum of twenty-five feet is required. And a rear yard of five feet, whereas a minimum of fifty feet is required. Just as an overview, I think that the board, for the board to know, actually hearing the testimony, that this is really a configuration that deals with a series of properties that my client has developed over a period of time. And it's the reason why this last lot, it's a smaller lot, it was acquired from public services, it'd be a public service switching station. But as you'll hear from my clients, professionals, this is a development of an overall complex that really operates efficiently between the various lots and the uses. Hence, you'll hear reference to access easements that cross over these properties because each of the owners of these lots are my clients, are the principals. And I know that Bob will get into it. So that is an overview. I would call Mr. Bob Paulus for testimony as all of you. Bob has been here before. He is the principal of the applicant here this evening. And I know that he would like to make an overview presentation to you to give you an idea of just what the thinking is for the creation of this overall industrial park. Bob, go ahead.
Can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Robert Paulus, P A U L U S.
Do you swear our friends and tell the whole truth and not the other truth?
Yes, I did.
Why don't you go ahead and you were...
Yeah, thank you. I represent, I'm one of the principals of the applicant for both, both the lots involved in this application. As part of the application, we plan to construct a five thousand seven hundred seventy-five square foot retail building, which will have four rental units and the architect will testify that in a little while. That will include twenty-three parking spaces, one electric vehicle charging station, a bike rack, one drive-in door unit, and it will have LED lighting throughout the site. The building will be leased to low-impact users, no fast food, no drive-through type of users. Retail uses in this area that will service the area, service businesses and such. We can give greater detail onto that if anybody has any questions about our intent on leasing of the property. Our owner, engineer, architect, traffic engineer and planner will elaborate in detail on the site layout, the design, the improvements, the building construction and also any traffic impact. As Mr. Kelso had said, the site plan and the architectural design is part of an overall development that we have done over a period of years. We started at seven fifty and worked our way up through the development of the properties along Jersey Avenue. Seven fifty is actually fifty thousand square foot industrial building. We have occidental property where they have their calcium chloride, which is with rail service. And they have about a million, fifty-pound bags of calcium chloride out in the storage area. And then we have over past this lot is the transfer station. We're finishing up the smaller building, industrial building to the back, which is about thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet. That's already pre-leased and they should be moving in the end of June. So the development has taken step by step up Jersey Avenue from the mile run all the way up to where the transfer station was recently built out. As we were developing the property, the public service transfer station, substation, which has been quite an eyesore for many, many years, this is an old photograph to give you some context about what it was. And behind that was a substation that we had to serve the old, built whole battery property, which we developed over the period of years. So this site is going to go from everything that was here a long time ago, get rid of all this substation and now develop it into a small retail use. You know, one would say, well, you know, why the smaller piece at the end? Well, it just worked out that way. We've been negotiating with public service over a long period of time in order to acquire this piece of property, convince them to not put it back into their land banking and then possibly use it for another substation in the future. We traded off some access easements and worked out an arrangement where we had purchased the property from public service. We have closed title on the property with them. And we came in with what we thought would be the best curb appeal and also provide a service within the area because there's very few retail spots that are available for the industrial area out here on Jersey Avenue. The environmental concerns on the property is once they removed the substation, they had to do an environmental studies and make a submission to the New Jersey DEP for a cleanup program. Public Service is responsible for that. They've undertaken a large part of that remediation to the property. The remediation is concluding. They're going to do their last bit of excavation of contaminated soils. The contamination that they encountered, once they removed the substation, are low-level PCBs. Those PCBs are impacted the soil. The main part of the site right here had to be excavated some twenty feet deep. That was removed. Groundwater testing has been performed. They have an excavation to do along Jersey Avenue, which is actually off of our property, but into the DOT right-of-way. They've obtained their DOT permitting and they're going to do that excavation within the next month or so. As new property owners, we have engaged a LSRP. That LSRP is responsible for our oversight as the owners of the property. Public Service will continue to do all cleanup and do all monitoring. There's going to be two monitoring wells on the property. In the future, there may be a need for basically groundwater rejection to get any groundwater. But the PCBs are low-level, stable, and public service having the deep pockets they have is a good partner to have in this property for the cleanup. So we feel comfortable with public service. They're very responsive in providing information. That information flow, we've passed it on to the city engineer and that flow of information on the environmental will continue on through the remediation of the property. The environmental is important to us because we ourselves have spent approximately ten million dollars cleaning up the environmental on all of these properties. So when it's all said and done, from the mile run all the way up to the transfer station, we're going to have new rehabilitated properties, which will, you know, not only give us ratables to the town, but a cleaner environment for the town. The property will have two monitoring wells, which will remain on the property. There will be a transformer pad mounted on the property. The engineers' report and the planners' report, we have answered in detail and addressed all those questions that were raised. I think we have said that we will comply with everything on that report. I don't think there's any issues with those with respect to landscaping. We're going to upgrade the landscaping actually, then we'll be showing on the plan because we think that's important, especially with this small parcel. As part of the common ownership, I'm one of the principals, my two sons are the principals of all the surrounding properties. So with respect to cross easements and cross easements that have to be reported, that will occur so that because some of the uses on the properties for loading, trash removal, all the cross easements for water sanitary, they will be shared, but there will be cross easement agreements. Seven sixty Jersey Av, seven sixty New Brunswick Urban Renewal has consented to this application and will give all the cross easements that are necessary for the property.
Any questions for Mr. Paulus?
Any questions, comments from the board or board staff, professionals?
Any questions, comments from the board or board staff, professionals?
We just wanted to give you an overview of what's going on around here.
Thank you.
At this time, I will call Mr. Leslie Walker for testimony.
Can you state your name and spell your last name?
Sure, Leslie Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and not give out the truth?
I do.
Mr. Walker, you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's right.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the civil engineering components of the application specifically before the board this evening?
I am.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience? And you have been...
I've been in front of this board, the planning board, all throughout Middlesex County and all over New Jersey, and it does remain.
Mr. Walker, we'll tip you as an official.
Okay.
Then, Mr. Walker, if you could, if you could give us an overview of the site itself and specifically identifying the application before the board, and then going through all the civil engineering components of it.
Sure. It is, Bob makes it easy. I'm going first, he kind of steals happy thunder. So the site is located on the east side of Jersey Avenue. And as the applicant described, it's completely surrounded on the north, south, and east sides by other properties controlled by the same parent company. Site access is through a common driveway. 780 Jersey Avenue is the 39,500 square foot warehouse that is under construction, previously approved by the city, and has a driveway that runs out to Jersey Avenue. Our proposed access shares that driveway and then brings a small entrance to the parking lot off of that driveway. The building is oriented, we'll call up the page north, it's north to east. But the building is, the front of the building is facing north, the long side, and that's where the parking is oriented. And then there's the smaller face of the building, faces Jersey Avenue. There is a, one handicap space required and provided right in the front of the building with an access ramp. There's an electric vehicle charging station at the end, and then there's a bicycle rack. It's hard to see on the rendering here, which should be A1, I believe, A1?
A1.
Yes, A1. Which is just basically a colored version of the landscaping, and we show the utilities on here for...
That's what I reckon, could you put the date on that?
Sure. The, this is dated May 11th. Loading for the, for the building, because of the configuration of the lot and, you know, the, it just works out better to have the loading on the lot 3.06, the 780 Jersey Avenue site. So trucks would come in, circle and pull into the loading space or pull up and back in if it's a larger truck. They talked about having a garage bay in the back of the one unit, the option of that. So we have a small access door roll-up door in the back, behind a refuse area. San Ferry Sewer is going to be connected into the existing main that was constructed for 780 Jersey Avenue. There was a manhole put on the line in anticipation of this development. Electric, gas, water will all come from stubouts and connections out on Jersey Avenue. Lighting is all LED. When we reached out, we reached out to the same designer who's done all of these sites, LSI, so that they would analyze the lighting, not only with just this small, you know, area of our site here, but with the 780 Jersey Avenue lighting as well, so that we didn't have hot spots and, you know, bright spots, dark spots. Everything's LED, everything's compliant. Landscaping, there are currently no trees on the site. Like they said, it was an electric substation, and there's no trees being removed. There will be a total of seven trees and 122 shrubs somewhere done, as well as areas of lawn, mainly in the front. The monument sign that they're proposing, 15 feet high, 100 square feet, is fully compliant with the ordinance, and it'll be right here in the front of the site at the driveway. And stormwater management. So when we, when we designed 780 Jersey Avenue, we knew that this, this smaller lot was, was in the process of being acquired. So we anticipated the buildup of this as fully 100% impermeable to make sure that we had ample capacity in the system. And then all we did was leave a stubout for connection. That was fully approved under the 780 Jersey Avenue site. And it's constructed, it's an underground chamber system with water quality and meets all of the required reductions of water quality and the like. There's a handful of existing non-conformities due to the lot size, lot width, lot depth. New variances for front yard, side, and rear yards, as well as a front yard parking setback, and then the loading setback because technically it's on another lot. And that's all I got.
I have no further questions, Mr. Walker.
Any member of the board or board professional have any questions or comments for this witness? Saying no, next one, please.
I call Mr. James DiBarbieri.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
James DiBarbieri, that's D-E-B-A-R-B-I-E-R.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and not give out the truth?
I do.
Mr. DiBarbieri, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And in that capacity, you're familiar with the building and the architectural components of that building?
Yes.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience? And I know you've testified here before.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll accept the resident's request.
Thank you.
Planning board many times.
Hey, you go.
Okay, but I don't recall.
Thank you. Did you roll my thing? If you could, then, Mr. DiBarbieri, if you could go through the architectural components of the building.
Okay. This is our drawing A1, it's in your package, we did colorize it. But to go through this, we have our floor plan...
Could you give the date on that, so that helps the board to turn me on?
Okay, that is, the date is 5/11/22.
Thank you.
This includes the exterior elevations in 2D plus a floor plan. We're showing you the floor plan first, just to orient you. Relationship to this building, Jersey Avenue runs up and down the sheet. This narrow portion faces Jersey Avenue. As was mentioned before, we envision possibly four tenants in this building. The building, actual footprint dimensions are 105 by 55. That makes up the square footage of 5,775. You'll notice that, and if you look over here, this is really the larger front facade of the building that faces the parking area. That's where we have our entrance doors and storefront glass. On the Jersey Avenue side, we also have storefront glass. The building itself will be of non-combustible construction. We're going to have masonry walls and steel-framed roof and deck, and glass storefronts. The range in size of these units, the range is from relatively small, 1,200 square feet to a large one of 1,875. Because of that, the HVAC equipment on the roof will be relatively small HVAC packages. To give you an idea of size, they would be maybe three foot high by three foot wide by five foot deep. And you'd typically locate them in the center of the building, away from the edges of the, of the building. I was the architect for the other buildings we talked about on this campus. 750, 760, and 780. And if you're familiar with the site, those buildings set back, and they're all of a common color scheme, and that's what we designed. We wanted to create a campus-type look for those industrial buildings, trying to tie them together. This building, we feel different. This building is, as you saw on the site plan, forward of all those properties, and its use is a retail use. It needs to be different, it needs to have its own identity and color scheme. And the best one, I'd like to show you, we have the 2D elevations. Here's a rendering, this is the view from Jersey Avenue. Just looking at the corner of the building. Colors are a little off, but we envision a red split-face brick. It'll have a split-face block. It'll have a exposed aggregate with some great tints in it. The split face allows you to see the actual aggregate of the block when it's manufactured. We're also going to use a gray mortar on that. On the storefront, on the storefronts, we're going to have glass from the ground floor up to 10 feet high. The molding frames are going to be in black. And each of these tenant spaces will have their own glass storefront. Above the storefront, we're going to put a standing seam light gray metal roof on top. And above that, we're going to use a darker gray fascia, which we feel will give a nice contrast to the tenant signs. The buildings that don't face Jersey Avenue or the parking area aren't going to be the same split-face red block. They do have exit stores, doors on the rear side that faces the warehouse building. And actually, this elevation here faces the warehouse building. This is one where we have the possible overhead door in there for a small garage. This building faces 986, which is the transfer station. And you can see that we have the same split-face block with the exit doors. Also, for security, we're going to have, under our canopy, we're going to have a security lighting. There'll be downlights mounted under there. And we're also going to add security lightings around the entire building on each of the split-face block sides also. There's also site lighting, Bob, so we want this to be bright and noticeable. And that's why I think it's important that this has a different architectural feel because customers are going to need to know that this building is here. We want them to notice it. And it's, as you can see, in a state of the forest, located right up close to Jersey Avenue, which allows customers to see this building as they're driving up and down Jersey Avenue, come right in and out for very efficient parking circulation.
I have no further questions, Mr. DiBarbieri.
Any member of the board or board staff have any questions for this witness? Saying no, do you have to stop?
Thank you. At this time, I will call Mr. Lee Klein for testimony.
Lee, middle initial D, is it Daniel Klein, K-L-E-I-N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and not give out the truth?
I do.
Mr. Klein, you plan before this board, before I?
Uh, I wasn't sure if it was planning or zoning. Do you recognize me? Okay, very good then, because I remember being here, I just wasn't sure which word.
The point is for us as well.
My license is current, I'm still a professional engineer in New Jersey, as well as a certified professional traffic operations engineer.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks. Mr. Klein, you had an opportunity to perform an engineering, you've had traffic engineering evaluation for the site?
That's correct.
And I believe that report was submitted to the, to the city?
Yes, it was.
Could you just give us a brief overview of your evaluation and your, I guess, your conclusions and recommendations with regard to this?
Certainly, I prepared a traffic engineering evaluation report dated May 10th, 2022. And in that report, I prepared a trip generation calculation for both the previously approved warehouse, as well as the proposed 5,775 square foot retail facility. The combined uses will share the same driveway on Jersey Avenue. They'll generate approximately, together, approximately 40 trips in the morning peak hour, approximately 100 trips in the PM peak hour during the weekday, and on a Saturday, approximately 67 peak hour trips. Those numbers typically, as you'd heard the last traffic engineer say, when we're below 100, we're right at 100 on the PM peak hour for a weekday. So I was able to collect from historical traffic data on Jersey Avenue from the NJDOT website, and I was able to do an analysis of the driveway with the proposed use as well as the previously approved use. And the driveway is going to operate at levels of service C or better during the morning peak hour, and level of service E or better during the PM peak hour. Those are acceptable levels of service typically throughout New Jersey, and it's not going to have an impact to the operations of Jersey Avenue during the operation of this, of these facilities. And that's it.
Okay. No further questions to Mr. Klein?
Any member of the board or board professionals have any questions for this witness? Saying no, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will call my final witness, Ms. Allison Coffin.
Hello.
Hi, Audrey.
Okay, how are you?
Can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and not give out the truth?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Coffin, you are a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in that capacity, you've had an opportunity to do a planning evaluation with regard to the use that's being proposed, as well as the various, what variances are being requested?
Yes.
Could you give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience? And I would say she has been before.
I thought she was.
I'm licensed, I still have my license.
She used to make, when she did that, made fun of her last name, she didn't do it.
You know, it's a lot darker now.
If you could, then, Ms. Coffin, if you can do an overview of your analysis of the variances that are being requested this evening, and hopefully you can provide a basis for us for your...
Sure, the applicant tonight is proposing to construct a 5,775 square foot retail commercial building with four tenants on the site, which is a 26,715 square foot lot. It's current, it was previously developed with a PSENG substation, and the substation's been removed, leaving behind a vacant gravel lot. And that lot is impacted by a 50-foot-wide easement along the eastern side of the lot to provide access between Jersey Avenue and the adjacent lot 3.06 to the rear. The site's located in the I-2 general industrial zone. The proposed retail commercial building is not permitted, so the applicant is requesting a D1 use variance. There is existing variance conditions for lot area, lot width, and lot depth. This is an undersized parcel. And variance relief is being requested for the front yard setback, the side yard setback, and the rear yard setback, as well as technically for the loading zone. There is a loading zone provided, but it's on the adjacent lot. And relief is also requested for the parking setback, the loading setback, foundation plantings, and the buffer for that loading zone, as it's located on the lot. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested D variance, and the variance can be granted... and the variance can be granted with no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The general welfare is advanced by this variance due to the fact that the site advances the purposes of the MLUL, due to the fact that the site is particularly suited to the use. The site is extremely undersized for the zone in terms of area, width, and depth, with an access easement encumbering the eastern 50 feet of the site. With these conditions, the site is not well-suited to the larger-scale industrial uses permitted in the zone. The site can accommodate a small-scale retail building as proposed, and this type of use is not present in the immediate area. The development of this undersized parcel with commercial retail uses would fill a void in services available to the residents working in the surrounding area. The bulk variances can also be granted without detriment. This is a somewhat unique situation where an undersized lot is encumbered with an access easement, further reducing the footprint available for use. The lot area, width, and depth are non-conforming conditions, so there's hardship associated with those variances. And this also leads to the setback, the landscaping, and the buffering variances. They result directly from the undersized nature of the lot, combined with the easement on the property, results in a hardship relative to the usability of the site within a reasonable footprint. Likewise, the site's constraints make it difficult to provide a dedicated loading zone on-site, but the applicant has provided a solution to that by putting the loading on the adjacent lot and making it available through cross-access easements. There is no substantial detriment, in my opinion, to the granting of the requested variances. There's no negative impact on the surrounding properties, the development is small in size and will provide support to the surrounding industrial employers. The master plan identifies a traffic congestion as an increasing concern throughout the city, and the inclusion of a small-scale retail use in the middle of this larger industrial area, this employment center, will help eliminate the need for trips further out for employers to have some retail and service needs met for their employees. The proposal advances purposes of your master plan, two of the goals, which is reusing vacant land and abandoned sites and improving inter- and intra-municipal traffic movement by, again, providing services in close proximity to where people are working.
Thank you, Allison, I have no further questions to Ms. Coffin, and that completes our presentation.
Any member of the board or board professionals have any questions for this witness? Saying enough. Thank you, Allison. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the public, any member of the public that wishes to speak on this for five minutes, please come forward for scratch. Just state your name and surname.
Charlie Cradville, K-R-A-T-O-B-I-L.
You already pointed one out, so good job, thank you.
Thank you, I do want to say I appreciate Mr. Paulus' thorough presentation and the efforts to remediate the contamination of Jersey Avenue. I just had a couple of questions about the project, so there was mention of a pre-lease building a little up the road, can you tell me what kind of tenant that is and when they might move in?
Yes, it's called a PEC tool. They basically manufacture precision instruments on the West Coast, and they ship them out here for distribution, so it's a distribution tenant, it's pre-leased, it's a low-impact use, extremely low impact.
Okay, and there was also mention of a transfer station a little further up the road, and I believe this was where I was at a week ago when there was a fire there, I wanted to ask about the impact of that facility and, you know, specifically that fire, is that something to be worried about, that there'll be fires at the transfer station?
Well, I don't see the relevance of that because it's had something to do with this altercation here, Charlie. I understand you're concerned about it, but I don't...
I'll give the benefit to Charlie, is the fire was quickly put out, it was inherent to somebody disposing of the wrong waste in the wrong way, and that's what happens when you don't handle waste coming into a transfer station. But the fire department did a great job, it's been thoroughly looked at, and fortunately there was nobody injured, there was no property damage, and there was no impact upon the surrounding properties.
Great, I did read some coverage where I saw there was, you know, a lot of litter that came from the place, but it's good to hear nobody was injured and that it was, hopefully, a one-time problem. Are there any comparable properties in the area? The only one I can think of is the Edgewood Properties Strip, closer to the DPW.
Not that I'm familiar with, Charlie, and again, the testimony that I provided is that it's a very unique piece of property, a piece of property that we've been trying to get for the past 10 years. When Public Service decided to move their transfer station on the North Brunswick side, we tried to convince them not to put it into land banking. We think this is the best use for a tiny little building, little property. We could have done an industrial, 5,000 square foot industrial, but it wouldn't look nice, so we tried to improve the original.
Okay, thank you, and just to be clear, the transfer station reference this time, that's a PSENG substation.
Oh, yeah, right, yes, that's a substation.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, I was talking about a trash facility or a recycling facility earlier. Yeah, that's all my questions, I did just also want to put on the record my objection to Mr. Kelso representing private clients, when he is paid a good lot of money to be the county government's top attorney, and I'd want to, you know, stress that I'm only here because I care about New Brunswick, I'm here in my capacity as the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper, it's covered the city for 10 years, and as an 18-year resident of the city. So if I wasn't here, I don't think there'd be a video of the meeting, and apparently, you know, nobody else is asking questions from the public on this particular application, so I'll continue to try to do the best I can, and I know, you know, maybe I wish Mr. Kelso wasn't here tonight, maybe he wishes I wasn't here tonight, but better or worse, we're stuck with each other, and we'll make the most of it, thank you.
Charlie, for what it's worth, this application, Milsex County does not have jurisdiction on this application.
Thank you.
Again, I love seeing Charlie, I see him all the time. We have fun.
Any other member of the public have any questions on this application? Saying enough, we're going to close the public portion. Board discussion, anyone have any questions?
Oh, I was just happy to see that even though the electric vehicle spot wasn't required, that it was added to the application, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, conditions?
Sure, the board app vigorously on this application, we recommend the following conditions of approval. Compliance with the terms of the city engineer report dated May 18, 2022, submission of all necessary easements and/or cross-access agreements where it is approved by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing a statement. payment of a site performance bond in an amount reviewed by the city engineer is required. Submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount funded pursuant to Title 1624160. payment of all water and sewer condition fees pursuant to Title 13041908. Issues for a road opening permit from the city engineer required. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city engineering department. Compliance with the terms of the big now consulting report dated May 19, 2022. Planning review escrow bond and for all anticipated post-approval reviews. payment of outstanding taxes and water sewer fees. Middlesex County planning board approval or waiver. DNR canal commission approval or waiver. R. O. S. Oil Conservation District approval or waiver. Any other agency approval or waiver if required. Submission of engineering and/or architectural plans to comply with changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing if any. Execution of a Title 39 parking enforcement agreement. Compliance with the city's water system service system ordinance, Chapter 1304. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their total spends, all onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary corrections in the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction staging will be done onsite unless an encouragement allowing that the public right-of-way is approved by city council. Streets will be kept clean of sediment and debris, the applicant shall cause streets to be cleaned and corrected to do so by the direct of public works. Tracking pads will be installed at all construction exits. Placement of damaged trees, curbs, and sidewalks for the direction of the city engineer. And the applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval. D1 use variance, front yard setback, single side yard setback, rear yard setback, loading in that it's provided on an adjacent lot. Existing conditions for lot area, lot width, and lot depth. We have design waivers for park and setback to the property line. Landscape buffer for loading and foundation plantings. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Second?
All right, that was Mike and Evelyn Escona?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
Michael Saldman?
Yes.
Carla Cacena?
Yes.
Michael Belvin?
Yes.
Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
And John Cox?
Yes.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, we're going to go to the annual report of the zoning board, review of variances granted by the zoning board of 2021.
Yeah, again, I don't really have anything to add on that, if anybody has any questions, you can just kind of sort of be on any variances that were approved last year, and I guess the idea is so you're aware of the trends and what's been happening with the zoning, if you have any recommendations for zoning changes.
Any member of the board have any questions on this?
No.
Glad to hear you. Thank you. Oh, I was just wondering if we had to order for the annual report?
No, you just have to make it, state that it's available to the public if they ask.
If anyone from the public would like to copy this, they are, there are some copies up here that are available. All right, thank you. Other matters of interest to the public, any? Do we have to take a vote on?
I mean, I don't know that you need to.
Do we have to take a vote on?
If you want to, just accept it, yes.
My understanding is just a report.
So we all have to do one?
No vote is required.
Okay, thank you. Other matters of interest to the public, any member of the public want to come forward and speak on any issues on this zoning board, please come forward. Mr. Cradville?
Yes, good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Did want to ask about, you know, first of all, it's good to be back in person and to see you all in real life. I did want to request, though, that you allow a remote access option for people to participate in your meetings, allowed in accordance with the law, a lot of towns are doing it, they have a hybrid option, and that way it doesn't leave people behind, right? So some people are still getting sick, some people have disabilities or time commitments, family that prevent them from coming to important hearings like what we had tonight. And of course, you know, during the pandemic, we proved that you can have remote public meetings, and, you know, you all were able to do that, and, you know, participate from your home or wherever you were at, and I think that, you know, that should be continued as an option. And I wanted to ask you, Mr. Chairman, if you're open to doing that for future meetings and giving the public a chance to...
We'll figure under advisement, we'll look into it.
Okay. I was at a planning board meeting recently, and I believe they adopted a new master plan, is that in effect now, is that, has that taken effect, is that official?
It's been adopted.
Okay. And has it been shared with the board members, have you all seen the new master plan?
I have.
Okay, I encourage you to read through it, I did see a lot of really interesting facts and figures about New Brunswick, as well as, you know, a look at what can be a sometimes scary future. There's a climate component of the plan, and I would encourage you all to read it and keep that in mind as you review applications. You know, unfortunately, New Brunswick is already very built out, and we have flooding issues in some places that are probably going to get worse due to climate change, so it's really important to recognize that when we're reviewing applications, and hope that you'll keep that at the top of your mind as we all go through this situation together. The only other issue I wanted to raise tonight is, is there anybody who's on both the planning and the zoning boards? Yes, okay, so Mr. Ferguson is indeed still on the planning board, and he's also on the zoning board, I didn't know that was possible, but congratulations on both of those questions.
A lot of Monday nights.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, yeah, I guess we've seen a lot of each other. Yeah, and that's all for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Sir, please come forward.
Hi, Matt Joyner, J-Y-N-E-R. I was just, I don't know, I know you guys just adopted a new master plan, so this question's not like too far out there.
We don't adopt the master plan, the planning board does, and then it goes to the city council on the live organs.
All right, my mistake.
That's right.
I was curious, with the southern portion of the city being zoned for like industrial uses, I was curious if the board had any long-term plans to do any sort of residential or mixed-use development around the Jersey Avenue Station site? I was just curious if that was any, you know, anything on the books about that.
Unless it comes before the board, we, you know, it depends on if a private developer wants to come in and do something, it's not up to us if, you know, it's going to be a private or developer more than likely if anybody is going to do that.
Oh, okay.
All right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other member? I had seen enough, going to close that up, matters of interest to the public, and go motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair?
I agree.
Thank you all for coming.